So at this time, I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Present.
Commissioner Granados?
Here.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Here.
Commissioner Leon?
Here.
Commissioner Mirabella? Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad?
Here.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Here.
Chair Williams?
Here.
Chair, there are eight commissioners present for this evening's regular meeting.
Thank you. Would you please now lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Unbelievable, yes, God, give her peace and love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Clerk. Would you now please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
The Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the County of Union who are designated to receive such notice, and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 in the Administration Building, and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2022 with the Office of the County Clerk.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve communications?
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad, seconded by Commissioner Dr. Garrettson. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
You have eight votes in the affirmative on the communications.
Thank you so much. May I now have a motion to approve the following minutes, Thursday, April 7th, Agenda and Regular Meeting, Thursday, April 28th, Agenda and Regular Meeting. You have a motion. Some of? Moved by Commissioner Kowalski.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Kowalski, seconded by Commissioner Leon.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. These are for the minutes of the April 7th Agenda and Regular, and the April 28th Agenda and Regular Minutes. Commissioner Baker?
I have to abstain, excuse me, abstain from the April 7th Agenda Setting Session, as well as the April 7th Regular Meeting.
And for the April 28th, you?
Oh, April 28th Agenda Setting and April 28th Regular Meeting, approved.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes, I have to abstain, well, yes, for April 7th, and I am saying abstention on the 20th and 20th Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Granados?
Aye, aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Abstain from the April 7th Agenda and Regular Meeting, and yes, to the April 28th Agenda and Regular Meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye, aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye, aye.
Chair, you have six votes in the affirmative with two abstentions for the Agenda 7th, for the minutes of the April 7th Agenda and Regular Meeting. You have seven votes in the affirmative with one abstention for the April 28th Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes.
Thank you. The meeting is now open to the public for the purpose of commenting on resolutions being offered for adoption and/or on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern. Kindly state your name and your town of residence for the record, and if you are speaking on a resolution on tonight's agenda, please note the resolution number to which you are referring, and please also adhere to the five-minute time limit. So, the floor is open.
Jennifer Cologne Roselle, good evening. I've been employed with Union County for six years. Prior to working for the county, I had odd jobs to try to make men's eat and meet. My children and I were exposed to a domestic violence situation, and we had to flee in order to protect ourselves. I utilized the county programs and put myself in counseling at the YWCA in Elizabeth and Kennelworth. I had to apply for TANF and rental assistance. I was also in the Work First program. I have firsthand experience on what it's like being a client, and I'm still experiencing what it's like to be a client because I'm still a client. I've been working for the county for six years, and I still do not make enough to survive. It saddens me to see my other coworkers on services, especially with the rising prices due to inflation. I volunteered during the pandemic to make more money, but I shouldn't have to constantly burn myself out in order to make the salary that we should be receiving. My coworkers and I worked very hard during the pandemic. We didn't close, we were pushed to our limits, exposed to the virus constantly, we were given remote, and then it was taken away from us. We adjusted. Throughout the whole ordeal, we were told how much we were appreciated, but anytime we speak the truth in how we feel, we are shot down. We all deserve an increase in our pay to match the cost of living and reflect the work we do and did for this agency. We deserve that across the board for everyone, to receive the proper increase. Morale is at an all-time low in this agency, and it saddens me that six years later, I'm still standing here asking for help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Floor is still open. I know that we are still in contract negotiations, so we cannot comment, but we'll let those negotiations continue. Thank you. Seeing no one else, I will close this portion of the meeting, and I would ask for a motion to adopt the following: Resolutions 2022-422 through 2022-469.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Baker, seconded by Vice Chair Hudak. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garrettson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Yes, aye, and abstain on 2022-429 and -430.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudak?
Aye.
And Chair Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner, you have eight votes in the affirmative on all resolutions, with the exception of two resolutions, 2022-429 and 2022-430. We have seven votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thank you so much. We've come to the part where we give our commissioner reports. Before we do that, I do want to acknowledge that tomorrow is the birthday of our clerk, Jim Pilateri, and happy birthday, Jimmy.
Happy birthday, Jimmy!
Okay. So, starting at my far-left, left commissioner, Dr. Garrettson.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. I wanted to bring a couple highlights of activities that I've been able to do in the community. The first, I attended a community cleanup in Hillside at the Charlotte de Filippo Park. It was wonderful to see so many of our talented staff from our department that really were able to help support high school students do a community cleanup. So, I'd like to thank everybody involved because it was truly appreciated. So, I see folks who showed up, and we almost got into the water and dredged some of the litter out. So, I just really want to thank you for that opportunity because there are more to come. So, I want to just make sure that if you do have an opportunity, colleagues, please make sure you do check that out. It's never a bad thing to try to help pick up litter in our communities. The second event that I like to highlight was the Urban League of Union County. It was an event, and actually, it was at Kane University, but they're based in Elizabeth. And I was happy to be there to not only give brief comments, but also to receive a certificate for the very good work that our county continues to do in partnership with that organization. I was astonished by so much activity that we do with them, and sometimes we don't realize how we are truly so embedded in a lot of these organizations. So, I just want to truly commend the Urban League of Union County, the immediate past president, and the incoming president, both who are two strong women, that I was really, really happy to be able to be in their presence, but to see their vision and their goals. The next event that I was able to share in and see was the food distribution that we do. So, again, I acknowledge all the good work of the county employees and all the volunteers that attended that day, but most importantly, that was in Raway. It was just amazing to see how many volunteers did come out. There were, you know, folks from school system, there were folks, there were adults, there were so many different people really kicking in on a day that was super-duper hot. So, we know that food insecurity is real, and it was just, again, another day that I was able to see what's happening in the community with the support of this county. And finally, I want to highlight an upcoming event that will be in Plainfield. It is the Rhythm and Blues by the Brook, a full afternoon of free music and activities at Cedar Brook Park that will be hosted Saturday, June 4th, from noon to 6 o'clock. The entertainment or the headliner is Rose Royce, a hit-making ensemble with five platinum and eight gold records to their credit. That's quote-unquote. The event also includes a food court, marketplace, and car show. There'll be activities for all ages, children, there'll be a petting zoo, pony rides, and more, and there will also be a health and wellness fair sponsored by Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Ada Omicron Zeta Chapter of Plainfield. So, there are a full list of activities that you can see at our website, but there'll also be several activities throughout our parks. As we know, our county parks are access for everyone, and there are so many different opportunities to do arts, entertainment, all throughout the summer. So, as the summer really gears up, please consider Union County. Those are my comments this evening, and thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garrettson. Commissioner Leon?
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin on my announcements, I just wanted to express my most heartfelt sympathies to those tragically killed this week in Uvalde, Texas. The highness act of violence on Tuesday at an elementary school is horrific and unacceptable, and it is too, it is all too familiar in the United States. We must do better as a country, and it starts with all of us. We, as a nation and a community, must be vigilant to ensure that our schools are safe places for all our children. Moving on to my announcement, I would like to first announce that our pools and spray parks officially open this weekend for the summer season, kicking off this Saturday, May 28th, at 11:00 a.m. Our spray parks will be open until 6:00 p.m. for use. Our pools will also be open from 12 to 6:00. These will remain open on weekends until Monday, June 27th, then they will operate daily for the summer. You can find the locations and a complete schedule for the season on our website. We have a Memorial Day tradition here in Union County, and that is to place small American flags on the gravesite of very armed forces, every armed forces veteran in our community. The Commissioner Board is honored to provide the flags for this tribute to those who served. As a matter of fact, this year, we have provided more than 30,000 flags to be placed at veterans' graves in 20 different cemeteries. It is a task that involves many hands, and I would like to thank the members of veteran groups and other organizations who will be visiting the cemeteries with us over the weekend. As we walk to these grounds, we recall those who made the ultimate sacrifice, and we are reminded that we, the living, are tasked to carry forth the cause for which they gave their lives. So, let us observe Memorial Day every day by continuing to work for progress and for a nation that lives up to the vision of our founders, one nation united in the principles of democracy, equality of rights, and equal dignity for all. Thank you. This is all for me tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Granados?
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned before by many members of this Commissioner Board, there is no words to express our shock and heartbreak upon learning of Tuesday's loss of 19 children and two teachers. That's why today, our Commissioner Board passed a resolution calling for a U.S. Senate to pass the vote on the HRA, the Bipartisan Background Check Act, that the House approved more than a year ago. This bill will expand federal background checks required for gun purchases. Currently, federal law does not require that unlicensed gun sellers operating online or at gun shows conduct background checks prior to the purchase of arms. This is outrageous and needs to be changed. Passing this act would close loopholes in gun purchases, requiring a background check for all gun sales. These 50 senators who have refused to put this vote forward and are responsible, we hear are trying to work on it now, but it needs to be done soon because we can't have any more tragic losses of life in our communities and our country. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Granados. Commissioner Palmieri-Muddad?
Thank you, Chair. Hello, everyone. The 2022 primary elections are approaching, and Election Day is on Tuesday, June 7th. There are several options for residents, early voting, in-person voting in New Jersey will begin on June 3rd through June 5th. Voting hours are Friday and Saturday from 10:00 to 8:00, and Sunday from 10:00 to 6:00. There will be seven early voting locations around Union County, and residents can visit ucnj.org/UCBOE for more details on locations. Starting last week, voters who wish to use a vote-by-mail ballot for the June 7th primary election can apply for one in person at the county clerk's offices in Westfield and in Elizabeth. Residents can also fill out their ballot during the same visit and cast it in a secure drop box at the office, or take it with them and fill it out later. There will be 24 secure ballot drop boxes around Union County for those wishing to drop off vote-by-mail ballots. Drop-off locations can be found on the website as well. Calling the Election Board is the best way for voters to ensure that they are aware of all voting options and dates available to them. You can call them at 908-527-4123. And I could not adequately put into words my heartbreak over the tragedy, the preventable tragedy in Texas. So, I am praying for those families. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kowalski?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to express my condolences to the Luzzardo and Bravo families. This has been a rough week for a lot of people, and for these families who are part of our Union County family as well. And so, I know they have a lot of support around them, but from those of us on the Board, we express our condolences as well. And as far as the Uvalde killings, I think most of us in this room and in Union County realize that the time for talking about banning assault weapons is really done. In New Jersey, we have good gun laws, but the rest of the country needs to do it, and we need to let our friends and other places know that it's, they need to, they need to be doing something about it, they need to be voting. Voting in a primary is not necessarily a very exciting thing to do, but what happens is the people that you vote for are going to make the difference on this, and the people who come out and take action are going to make a difference. On a more pleasant note, I want to express my congratulations to all the students who graduated from Union County College this week. It was a beautiful occasion, beautiful day. I was happy to congratulate the student speaker, Luana Rampoletti, who came to this country from Brazil. She's kind of an immigrant success story. She, it took her a little longer than the traditional student to get through her first years at UCC, but she's graduating with a bachelor's, or no, with an engineering degree to go on to MIT. So, we're very proud of her and wish her the best. And we have a lot of other students will be graduating soon, and we're happy for them as well. We'll be talking about VOTEC soon. And, oh, we have a bunch of shredding and recycling events. So, if you're getting on to your spring or post-spring cleanup, on June 1st in Clark, on June 11th in Cranford, and June 25th in Scotch Plains, there'll be shredding events. On June 4th at Kane University in Union, we have a household hazardous waste recycling program, and scrap metal recycling happens every first and third Saturday of the month. So, you can get more information about all of these recycling events at ucnj.org and look for recycling. And one other thing is that we do have an opportunity for our municipalities to get a grant for doing a mural project or some other similar kind of arts project in their town. This is, no county money is involved. This is a grant that we're being awarded by the New Jersey State Council for the Arts. And it will, this is the first time we're mentioning it. We just found out that we're getting it, and the notices will be sent out this week to all the municipalities. They can apply for up to $5,000, and one grant per municipality will be given. And for more information, you can contact Union County's Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs, or go to the website, and applications will be due on June 30th. I understand it's not a terribly complicated application because this is on short notice. So, thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Baker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, too, would like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues previously expressed here regarding the Uvalde shooting incident and the loss to a member of the Union County family. Certainly, these things are tragic. We all hope and pray that there is an equitable solution somewhere down the line to prevent these kinds of things from happening in Buffalo and now in Texas. 10 years ago, it was Sandy Hook in Connecticut and so forth, Columbine. So, you know, I'm sure that this is not a true reflection of the values and the moral tone of citizens of the country, but the citizens of this country do need to get behind legislation to change the gun laws throughout the states. Different states have different gun laws. Jersey has some of the toughest gun laws in the country, but the citizens in these other states need to get behind their elected officials and pass some tougher gun laws. And that's what I have to say about that. Excuse me. However, on the brighter side, you know, we would like to invite everyone to come to the Free Native Plant Swap &amp; Shop event on Thursday evening, June 9th, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It will take place at the Scout Camping Area in the Watchon Reservation, located below the Trailside Nature and Science Center at 452 New Providence Road in Mountainside. At the Swap &amp; Shop, you can trade invasive plants from your yard for up to three colorful native varieties that attract butterflies and other pollinators, free of charge. More native plants will also be available for purchase at the event. Admission to this event is free. You can arrive anytime after 5:30 and stay as long as you would like. Expert naturalists will be on site to provide guidance and information on gardening with native plants. To attend, pre-register online at ucnj.org/plant-swamp. And that is all I have. Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Baker. Vice Chair Hudak?
Thank you, Chair. Last Thursday, I joined Chair Williams, Commissioners Kowalski, Leon, and Baker, as well as our Human Services Director, Debbie Ann Anderson, and Ray Giacobi, the mayor of Raway, where we announced in Raway the new Union County Community Resource Center. This new center will be located at 1591 Irving Street in Raway, and will enhance the well-being of Union County residents through an effective delivery of public human services offered by the Department of Human Services and its partners, truly a branching out of county services. Now, it will provide individuals and families a pathway to achieve greater levels of independence through the Community Resource Center, social services, senior services, youth services, veteran services, substance abuse and mental resources, so much more. Now, demands for our services are at an all-time high, and this new location will now connect Union County municipalities to a central area in the county to gain more access to the resources they may need. There are many county residents in need of help in certain areas, so we're so happy to work together with our department heads and county employees to open this new facility. This project is being done in coordination with the Department of Human Services and the Open Space and Recreation Historic Trust Preservation Fund. For more information on the services offered through Union County Department of Human Services, please visit ucnj.org. If I could just, for a moment, add my comments in regard to the shooting in Uvalde. You know, Chair Williams, your words were very appropriate, so too was, I thought, the reading of the names by Commissioner Kowalski. Personally, for me, and I've been on this board for 12 years, this is actually, I know this is the 20th school shooting this year. This is the seventh mass casualty incident since 2010 while I've been an elected official. And personally, and to echo Chair Kowalski's words, I am, you know, very aware of the effectiveness of the New Jersey gun laws and how rigorous they are, and so we are not talking about that. But I just, I'm exhausted by condescending and empty offers of thoughts and prayers which are best cynical and truly ineffective. There are 19 children who should be preparing to enjoy their summer vacation, two teachers to celebrate that achievement, and that has been silent. And truly, elections do matter, and there's certainly another course that can be taken. And I hope, you know, residents will realize that there is a world beyond the borders of this community and this state, and help other citizens voice those concerns, because I am by no means certain that there will not be another mass casualty shooting while I'm an elected official. And that overwhelms me with grief. It's very sad, and to be quiet and offer moments of silence, I think, is the wrong thing to do. I think we should be reading names publicly when these tragedies happen and not let people forget. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And just to follow, you know, what Vice Chair Hudak said, this is a political issue, and we know where the lines are drawn. One of the resolutions that we passed tonight was a resolution calling for the Senate to adopt a bill, this was brought to us by Commissioner Granados, thank you very much, requiring, you know, strengthening background check requirements for those who want to own guns. In some places, it's probably easier to purchase a gun than it is to purchase, you know, some sundry, right? So, I don't have anything to add to what has already been said, because what is there to say? There really does need to be some serious change. And, you know, my fear is that what Vice Chair Hudak closed with, this will not be the last, I fear that that is certainly true. So, that's what we kind of have to say about this. But there are still... But there are still injured folks in the hospital, and, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that there won't be more fatalities. On another note, however, I do want to remind everyone that Union County will be celebrating Pride Month starting next week. Throughout the month of June, beginning on Wednesday, we'll kick off our celebration, celebrating the LGBTQ+ community. We have a packed calendar, beginning on Wednesday, June 1st, at 1:00 p.m. We'll be hosting our annual Pride Month flag raising right on the steps of the county courthouse around the corner here in Elizabeth. On Saturday, June 11th, we will be hosting Love is Love, a youth pride dance for residents who are 13 years of age and older. This will take place from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Warren Uncle Sports Center in Roselle. One of our popular programs is Trivia Night. So, for trivia fans, on Thursday, June 16th, we'll be hosting LGBTQ+ Trivia Night at the, at the Tavern at Ashbrook in Scotch Plains from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Pride in the Park, our huge celebration of pride, which before took place at Raway River Park, we're actually going to be hosting it at Cedar Brook Saturday, June 18th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. We're actually announcing that we'll be hosting, holding the grand opening of our new and inclusive park, park space, Temike Park, located within Cedar Brook Park in Plainfield. The month will end at UC Pac, the Performing Arts Center in Raway, with a performance of the musical Head Over Heels, beginning at 7:00 p.m., and that is being presented in partnership with the city of Raway. Oh, and then I just got a, a note from Director Graziano. Those of you who ride through Raway know that Raway was decimated by Ida last September. Irving Street Bridge, the Irving Street Bridge just reopened. So, we're really glad to hear about that. Thank you so much, Director Graziano. So, with that, as I mentioned, all of our Pride events, we do have a calendar of all the events, so you can find out details about all of that if you visit ucnj.org/LGBTQ. And we encourage everyone, allies and friends, to attend this event. With that, County Council, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and everyone have a, a safe evening, and I'll call for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved by everybody, moved by Commissioner Palmary Mueden, seconded by Vice Chair Hudek.
Oh.
All clear.
You want to call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Commissioner Garretson?
Yes.
Commissioner Granados?
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski?
Yes.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Palmary Mueden?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hudek?
Aye.
And Chair Williams.
Thank you, Clerk. Aye. Now, we are adjourned. Thank you.